If we could please stand for the pledge.
Which pledge is this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we sustain this day? One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion that we move liquor control to between item number five and number six. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify.
Aye.
Any names? Yes. Any other agenda? So, Curry Galloway was our city clerk for four years. She recently passed away and she transformed that office quite dramatically in the four years she was here. She was a warm face in that office as she would go out of her way to help you. So I'd like to just take a moment to silence her. Thank you. Is there any public comment? If there is, I ask you to please make sure to keep your comments under two minutes and make sure it's not an item that's already on the agenda. Oh, go ahead, come on up here. Please, please just state your name for the record.
Stephanie Colvis.
Thank you. You can, you can say it or say it.
Um, so we have a group of children from High Bank and Smith that are going to be part of swim team this year. So we're very excited the pool is at heart. We've been talking as the parents that the kids will kind of meet and all walk together to the pool for swim practice. The only concern that we've had is that the kids will have to cross Congress right at Smith. And the crosswalk is barely visible and cars go through there kind of quick with the hill. So we were kind of wondering if we could get like those lights, if they can hit the button, the lights will flash and maybe lines can be repeated.
We can probably definitely do the lines, but the gentleman in back hiding, that's the gentleman you want. So, yes, just talk to him and he'll know, see if we can do it for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Even if it's a temporary measure, right?
We can, we used to have a sign and you could put in the middle of it and we can probably definitely.
And there might be something we can do to make it more visible, particularly since it's going to be a new traffic pattern. You know, these are about 12,500 bucks to put a signal system in like that. So, um, we need a lot of lobbying from the public sector in quality election, right? I'd say let's maybe start with some things that, you know, are a little more low budget.
Are there any other comments from people in the room? Oh, yes, sir. If you would, please state your name just for the record.
Yes, Jeffrey Nelson. Oh, I, like many Vermonters, a big fan of Vermont history. In 1924, the KKK wanted to swell their ranks with a Vermont membership drive. And in a state of about 300,000 some, the ranks were about 2,000. So they had a fair, had a fair showing in a number of major towns. Their main tack, of course, at that time was anti-Catholic sentiment, the pietas, as they called them, which almost seems quaint by today's standards. They hated everybody else, of course, but that was the main, you know, Vermonters were too Catholic for them. But the reception here in Vermont was rough. We banded together in towns. They got shown, as many of you probably know, a very hostile response. And they were roundly criticized for editorial boards and newspaper's up and down the state. In particular, the, our own St. Albans messenger asserted that the Klan would be frustrated by the biting blast of Vermont common sense. Among other responses in East Clarendon, they had people go to the Klan meeting, which was a rented field, and they wrote down license plates and doxed them all in the newspapers. And, and that was a hundred years ago. And there, uh, there are some days that I'm proud of that and other days that I wonder if we couldn't use some of that courage today. And I wonder if we have that sort of fortitude as public citizens to, to show up for people like that, to show, to display that that kind of attitude, that kind of thinking, part of it is difficult because they don't, it's not going to show up, that kind of attitude is not going to show up on your door in a white hood. That stuff, everybody agrees to. What it looks like is a lot of different silences in a lot of key moments. And that's actually harmful to people. It's harmful to be silent about the things that matter. And one thing we don't do in this country, thankfully much anymore, is whisper certain words. Remember, we used to do that, we'd, they have cancer. Cancer can hear you. It, they know they have cancer. It's not a shameful thing. You don't have to, it's not helping them by whispering cancer, right? It's, it's a bad thing. They fight it, we're behind their fight. Let's not whisper cancer. Well, black is the same thing. If you know people that self-identify as black, guess what? They're black. If you say black and when they say they want to be referred to as black, that's, that's it. Not saying black. When a black person or when a statement on behalf of a black person or about black people deliques the word black, you're denying their experience. It's, it's, it's inconsequential to just say what they said. And if someone self-identifies as something and you don't say that thing as a public, it's not okay. It's, it's taking away from their experience because they have chosen to let you in on the secret. Or it's not a secret, excuse me. It's not a secret. They've, they've let you know this important thing about themselves. And who are we to not say that that is important? And so that is what I would urge our community, just when people, in this case, Dr. Castro, volunteers for St. Albans to craft a message about her community and the black people that are affected, not saying the word black or having a statement that is devoid of the word black, it's not going to solve anything. And it's not a bad word. And if you find people that don't like, that think that black is a bad word, that's on them. And that is their problem. And I think this is a firm enough stance. It shouldn't be controversial in this day and age. And it's not. If you ask anyone of good conscience, they should not be able to be afraid of the word. And so that's just simply what I would urge is that when we make those choices to make people feel more comfortable or else, oh, someone's gonna, it's gonna be a controversial thing and just, can we just not say the word? That's not okay. It's not okay not to say the word. And, and part of it is I feel like we give the social sciences short shrift too. When we have an expert volunteer for St. Albans or someone giving testimony, if we cut out their expertise, like, like Dr. Castro's expertise, would we tolerate that if it were an engineering evaluation or a, some sort of judgment that someone had rendered? I just ask you to consider that. Consider that the words that our public says mean something and please make it count by saying the word black when we mean black.
Thank you.
I'm just going to go if there wasn't someone online that is going to.
If you, if you want it, come on.
I have a comment.
Lauren, we have one person here and then we can get to you, okay? Is that okay?
I'd actually like her to go first.
Okay, Lauren, you're up.
Oh, sorry. Okay, um, so I'm going to be reading a statement from on behalf of Professor Eliana Castro. She couldn't be here tonight because her husband is volunteering on a school board subcommittee and she has small children at home. In fact, it's exactly this deep personal investment that her family has to St. Albans City that compels her to address the council today. Eliana's daughter is 22 months old and has an autoimmune condition that makes her more susceptible to severe COVID illness. Her son is three months old and recently had open heart surgery. Neither of them is eligible to be vaccinated yet. Because of their medically sensitive children, Eliana and her husband are therefore careful to limit their exposure to the coronavirus. Eliana is a homeowner, a researcher on race and racism, and member of the Belonging Equity and Inclusion Committee. Recently, she asked if other members would be willing to wear face masks during upcoming meetings. It is especially important that she attend tomorrow's meeting in person because there will be training in safety protocols. Her simple request was not only denied by one member of that committee, but it was made very clear that a shared commitment to one another's safety, to health, equity for vulnerable community members, and inclusion of all voices and BEI committee participation was of no concern to this person. That person does not embody the spirit of BEI, nor is he someone I would want making decisions about our downtown, which should feel inviting and safe. I hope that is what agenda item six is about. But beyond this person, we must consider the following questions. Does a disregard for our neighbors reflect the city's core values? How could St. Albans, which purports to welcome all, grow its capacity for compassion? Until we can better answer these questions, St. Albans City will not and cannot compete with the truly vibrant downtown districts and cities like Burlington. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daisy Harrison.
Is this going to be a BEI presentation?
Is this about the BEI?
No.
Okay.
Barbara Finch. I'm just, because I can't remember anything, I'm going to read. The St. Albans City leadership requested Eliana Castro draft a response to the premeditated, targeted murder of 10 members of a predominantly black community in Buffalo, New York, to condemn the actions of a heavily armed white supremacist. The version the St. Albans City manager released was nothing short of whitewashing, in effect sanitizing the details of this woman's honest and deservedly gut-wrenching reaction to yet another vicious, senseless hate crime. Rather than allow the person chosen to share her words with St. Albans the right to speak the truth in a straightforward impactful manner, her words were watered down, omitted, and just plain replaced. Her words were replaced. Her words, words that she was invited to share, must have made the powers that be uncomfortable. The community of St. Albans, where many might think, oh, but that couldn't happen here, is home to an undeniable problem with racism and white supremacy. And as such, is at incredible risk unless we are willing to take a good hard look at this type of domestic terrorism. This threat will never end until we as a society find the courage to say enough is enough. In her statement, Eliana offered clear action steps to combat these problems in our community. One, be discerning in the media you concern, you consume. Seek to identify white supremacist ideology and avoid repeating language that perpetuates it. Two, speak to and disrupt this thinking among friends, family, and colleagues. This may be uncomfortable, but it is a small price to pay for combating hate. Three, monitor your children's activity on the internet and engage them in critical thinking about what constitutes reliable sources of information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rachel. I think I read that on front porch, Lauren? Thank you. Any other public comments? Anyone up?
Not seeing anybody.
Anyone on Zoom have any public comments? All right, okay.
Motion to recess for liquor control. Second.
So a motion by Mr. Hawkins, second by Ms. McCarthy. All those in favor going into liquor control, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any names? All yours, sir.
First application up is Nourish Delicatessen Bakery. Rick, you, um, Rick, yeah, Rick, you're on mute, by the way. You're on the TV. Rick, I can see you, you're still on mute.
He might not be at the computer right now. I can text him.
Okay. Want to move to the next one?
Move to the next one.
Okay. Next is Cityside Pub, Lisa Bluen. Lisa, come up, please. So Lisa, we have an application, we have an application for a first and third class liquor license for King Street formerly Shooters. Tell us what's up.
Well, I will be taking over Shooters. The new name is going to be Cityside Pub. Business hours will stay the same. I was formerly employed at Mighty Fine in Hyatt in Linda's here in St. Albans. I'm now currently employed at Food City and Bayside Pavilion here in St. Albans.
What changes are you going to make?
Pretty much keeping everything the same.
So you know that the biggest factor that we are concerned with when we look into these applications are the obvious, serving to minors and serving over the limit. But a couple of that, we usually find that where people make mistakes is, I see you're a, you're a corporation.
Yes.
When you have new members on the corporation, you have to let the liquor control board know.
Right.
Probably just here, we'll take care of it in Mont Villar. And I noticed in your lease, when I was reading over it, that you were required to have grand shop insurance.
Yes.
And that lease said your grand shop insurance was between one, two million dollars.
Yes.
And that would be a violation of the lease if you didn't have that grand shop.
Exactly, yes.
So you know you're always going to have one or two million dollars.
Yes.
Would you have a problem if we conditioned your permit on you having that grand shop insurance?
No, I would not.
Thank you. Any other comments? Nope, okay.
Make a motion to approve the application as presented. Second.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Hawkins, second by Ms. McCarthy. Any other discussion? Any public comment? Nope. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any names? There you go.
Thank you.
Anyone, Rick, on you?
Does that?
Lisa, Lisa?
Yes.
Come on back for a second. I didn't miss something. Your application includes an outdoor consumption permit?
Yes.
Are you going to use the same controls that are in place now on Shooters?
Yes.
And you know what those ramifications are? Monitoring what's going on at the outside?
Yes.
Making sure that people can't pass from the premises off the premises?
Yes.
And I also noticed when you put your application for outside consumption that you had just a deck.
Yes.
Okay. Now, what we would normally allow, and you may want to just in front of us amend your permit application, is the footprint of the building. And I'm saying that because you front Kingman Street.
Yes.
And so at some point in time, something may be going on on King Street where you want to have some tables out front.
Yeah.
And you, or you may not. But I hate to have you want to have tables out front and then have to come back up here and get a, amend your permit at that point in time when the event's going to happen.
Okay.
So would you like to amend your application in front of us to say the footprint of the building?
The footprint of the building, yes.
Except for the rear of the building, which is the parking outside.
Yes.
Okay. With that, I'll move your application. Approved as presented and amended.
And amended.
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, those, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any names? Congratulations again.
Thank you.
So if you could sign under approved and slide it around to me, there's no, you don't need to share it.
So, Mr. Levalle, are you here?
Rick, you on?
He's on. You're on mute, sir.
You're on mute, Rick. You're on mute.
I need to ask him a question.
I'm going to run down the street and grab.
You disapprove?
Oh, jeez.
Give me a cross, I have an initial, Mike. Sorry about that. Usually dudes don't have a place to sign if you don't approve.
Yeah, no. Can we unmute him from here? Can we unmute him?
I think we can request the unmute.
Okay, that might work.
Thanks, Lauren.
Oh, there we go.
Rick, can you hear us?
Yeah, I was sharing the sound because things are terrible.
Well, you're on mute. You were on mute, so we had to unmute you. So Rick, we have an application here from Nourish. In that, in that app, are you there, Rick?
Yep, I'm still here. It's just easier to hear you on my phone, sorry.
So we have the application from Nourish looking for a first and third class license without outdoor consumption.
What is going?
All right, tell us what's going on.
Sorry, say again.
Rick, explain to us what you're, what you're looking for and how you're going to change it.
Sorry, I'm looking for a first class. I'm just looking for a first class, not a third class, right? Third class is liquor. I'm just looking for first class and an outdoor consumption.
Okay. And how's that different from Nourish on Lexington Street or Center Street?
Nourish on Center Street didn't have a license at all.
Okay.
We, we didn't really have indoor seating, so we, we really couldn't accommodate a first class license in order to, to do inside, sorry, the first class license is for onsite consumption. So we wouldn't have qualified on Center Street. Whereas we've got 30, 32 seats capacity on Main Street.
Did you get a copy of liquor regulations?
Yes, I've done that. I also have taken the, uh, the courses for the liquor board.
Rick, did you look at the regulations where it saw that the council urges and suggests grand shop insurance?
Yeah, the insurance requirements, yep.
Right, for grand shop, not general liability, the grand shop insurance.
Correct.
Would you have a problem if we conditioned your permit on having that insurance?
No.
Was that a no, Rick?
It won't be a problem.
I'll move the application to be accepted as presented with the outside consumption on the permit of the building. Second.
So a motion made by Mr. Hawkins, second by Ms. McCarthy. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any names? Congratulations, sir. Thank you, Rick.
Sorry, I couldn't be here. I've got a, a house under construction too, so thanks very much, guys. Much appreciated.
All right, 80 minutes of liquor control board on August 10, 2020. Minutes approval.
Motion approved minutes or August 10, 2020.
Motion by Mr. Hawkins, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. McCarthy. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any names? Are you, Mr. Decker, are you abstaining?
No, I said aye.
You said aye?
Yes.
You weren't at that meeting, so you might want to abstain.
Okay, abstain.
Okay, one extension.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're very welcome. Any other liquor control business?
Chip.
Yes.
Are we in our, our license applications require, require grand shop insurance? Or are we, are they just a part of our regulations that say they should get it?
Well, we might just be relying on the ordinance right now. I don't know what the clerk's office is telling the applicants at the moment.
I think that by the, Curry and I were having discussions, the last time we were talking about the liquor control, that she was going to condition, request the council condition permits to have grand shop. So, is Arlie taking that responsibility on now?
Arlie and Sarah are handling that at the moment. We can write that right on the application. Conditioned upon grand shop insurance as per city ordinance.
Right. I thought that was in the ordinance, but when I was looking at it the other day, I thought it was a recommendation and not a requirement. And so I just think that with the council, when we approve those ordinance, we all wanted it to be a requirement, but.
Okay, we'll look into that.
Okay.
But you conditioned it tonight.
We conditioned both those tonight on having it.
You'll continue your condition.
Yeah. So we're going to have to condition that every time unless we change the ordinance to say it's going to be a requirement, which I strongly urge that we do at some point in time when we take a look at those regulations again.
Thank you. Any other business? No? Do we have a motion to adjourn now with the control?
I'll make a motion to the chairman of the liquor.
Has that been a motion? Do we have a second?
Second as a recommendation.
Ms. McCarthy's seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any names? All right. Next agenda item is consider removal of a member of the BEI committee. Dominic.
Some memo in your packet and I'll just enter in the record. It's addressed to the city council from the mayor and the city manager. The mayor and the city manager are requesting the city council act to remove Keith Longmore from the Belonging Equity and Inclusion Committee. The reason for the removal is that Mr. Longmore has repeatedly derided the mission and the need for the community, calling it, quote, unnecessary, a hoax, and a front for the family of this city. We have met with Mr. Longmore and asked him to resign in light of this misalignment. And he has refused. Council will recall that we created this committee in response to a multitude of factors, including but not limited to the reoccurring presence of white nationalists propaganda in the community at large, the desire among community members in the council to have a place where conversations around inclusion and belonging could occur and to advance the inclusive vision of all are welcome here that the council adopted. Mr. Longmore's continued participation prevents those goals from being achieved. And we ask the council to consider a motion to remove Keith Longmore from the BEI committee effective immediately.
Thank you. I will be brief with my comments. There's a difference between having a different opinion, which I think is very good. It brings, it brings about better change, it brings about better policy. That's different than just being an obstructionist and denying that the work being done needs to be done. We as a council decided that that work needed to be done when we created, when we created the committee unanimously. So that's going to be my brief comment on this. I figure I'll just start going with word one. Do you wish to make any comments?
I'm having a hard time with this one. Removing someone from an office after they've gone through a city council interview and putting them in place on a committee and then removing that person is, should be a high bar for us. I urge and I would hope that committees in their functioning can either handle those problems that present itself to the committee in manners that are, that can be presented in the rules of order of operating the meeting. Only in the case where someone won't allow that to go on and stymies the function of the committee would I even entertain doing what we're probably going to do here tonight. I hold this a very difficult decision to make. Initially, I was against it after hearing a lot of the evidence to date and probably some of the evidence that I'm going to hear tonight. My position is changing, but in a way where it's a position against obstructionism and not a position against someone who has a different opinion.
I strongly urge that committees have different opinions. I have different opinions here on this council, but work collaboratively with my colleagues here to either get through them or do what's best for the city. And I hope, after I hear the evidence today, I make the proper decision to do what's best for the city.
Thank you. Word two. That's you. I agree with him. Hawkins, you should wait and see and see what to, what to give another chance, and if it isn't good, as baseball, three tries and an apple. That's the way I feel, but I don't right now. That's it. Word three.
Well, my feeling is that I was hoping he might bring a different perspective to that committee at the onset. He hasn't shown that. If anything else, it's, it's just been holding the committee up from doing the work that they were assigned to do. And so, I would have to say that, for me personally, I, I agree with removing him from the committee.
Word four.
I think that we need to make sure that this committee has the ability to have people come together and accomplish the mission that we set out for them. Right now, the committee is stymied by a member that we appointed in good faith who interviewed and said that while they didn't, why, well, he didn't support the formation of the committee that it was formed, he would be a constructive member and bring a perspective in a respectful way. That hasn't been the experience, and I'm really concerned that this committee won't be able to function with somebody who has expressed a complete lack of faith in the mission and has derided the city council for even creating the committee. So, I'll be supporting removing Mr. Longmore from the BEI committee, unfortunately.
Word five.
Thank you. I respect the opinions of my colleagues on this city council. We did have a spirited discussion in executive session, and I respectfully am going to disagree with most of them. This, Mr. Longmore has not performed to my expectations on the committee. I believe he's only attended one meeting, and I don't see that he could be too disruptive after one meeting. My own feeling is he should be, should have been given several meetings to display whether he's going to cooperate or not. Apparently, he's not a cooperative individual, but I don't think he's been given enough time to do that. And furthermore, I don't think to have this here, we sort of got notice of it relatively late. I know the city manager and the mayor have been working with him, but from my point of view, we haven't had a great deal of time to ponder this issue. And thirdly, the committee is composed of eight people, and Mr. Longmore is a lone vote on many of these issues. It would seem that seven to one would take care of that in many instances. I also note that the BEI committee looked at their agenda for tomorrow night's meeting, and they have a very aggressive agenda. They're trying to accomplish a lot of things. I don't know if they've accomplished a lot yet, but they have an aggressive agenda of what they hope to accomplish. So, it would seem that even with Mr. Longmore on the committee, they're doing some belonging, equity, and inclusion type of things. So, for those reasons and maybe a few others, I'm going to not vote for the termination.
Thank you. Does any council members have any other comments before I open it up to the public? We'll start with folks in the room. If anyone would like to speak, please put your hand in and come up to the hot seat. Jeannie?
I was gonna have to come to the hot seat. I just have to say, having observed the one meeting that Mr. Longmore attended and is a chair of another committee that had some controversy around it when it was formed, I mean, these are people volunteering their time to serve the city. When there's an individual, whether it's one meeting, whether it's on his social media pages, whether it's just in the community in general that's going to constantly deride you as a chair, I would find that inhospitable, and it would make me wanna step down because what you're asking is for someone to manage a personality that's unmanageable. And I think he's publicly, in more places than just the meeting, made it unmanageable. So, I would advocate for my friends and colleagues who chair this committee for the decision to have him be removed, because it's just not fair to volunteers who wanna serve the committee better to ask them to manage that situation. And one meeting is more than enough to make any individual volunteering to wanna step down based on what I saw in the public recording and what I've seen on social media. Thank you.
I'm Leah Christen Morgan. I have been in the hot seat. First of all, I wanna thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I consider it an honor. I've moved to St. Albans in fairly recent history. Ironically, when I, my first trip to Vermont, St. Albans is the one place I visited besides Burlington. Had lunch at Tatro's, and unbeknownst and unplanned at the time, I ended up actually moving here, and it's been a wonderful decision. So, with that said, I'm coming to tonight as a citizen that cares deeply about this town and cares deeply about the democratic process, including things that you have done to set things in motion. I'm assuming in good faith you established the BEI committee. I'm assuming in good faith you set forth the objectives for that committee to adhere to. Some of them were broad brush, some of them had some specificity, but I assume that when you did it, you did it with intent and with good faith. How we get there will be an interesting road, and I'm sure it will have many zigs and many zaggs, and I'm sure at times I will be grabbing and holding on, as probably we all will be, because that is what this issue brings forth, some challenging conversations that are very needed for us to continue to move forward together. It's messy. It's messy. It's also, one of the most important things this city is embarking on, either directly or indirectly, many of the things that are being discussed are the civil rights issues of our time. Think about that. What legacy are you individually going to be leaving? What legacy, as a team of publicly elected officials, are you going to be leaving? Let me ask you this. I love downtown. I try to support downtown. I think it's terrific. I was born in a small town in southwest Missouri. By the way, if you ever wanna be elected and you're in that state, you need to say Missouri and not Missouri, so let's just make sure that's in the notes. So... When I think about the downtown area, of course, there's the downtown board, right? It does good work for this city and for our community, because we all benefit from a downtown that thrives. Would you put somebody on that downtown board who expressed a disbelief in downtown? That expressed, you know what we need? We need a lot more box stores outlined outside of the city area. I really don't believe in the downtown. It's a waste. Doesn't make sense. We don't need it. I'm fine. We don't need it. I haven't had a bad experience. We don't need it. Would you want that person on the downtown board? Notice, I didn't say, how do we want to develop the downtown area? What do we want that to look like? How do we want our merchants to come across? What kind of feel do we want? What kind of vibrancy do we want? What do we want to encourage them to do? I didn't say any of that, did I? Said, "I don't believe in the downtown area." That is exactly what you have with the BEI committee. It is inexcusable for anything. I'm not asking for a positive vote to remove him. I would expect a unanimous vote to remove him. Because this community deserves to have sincere, constructive dialogue. It is imperative that we agree to disagree. It is imperative that we have dynamic conversations, and we need, as a baseline for that, our members to believe in what you individually and collectively have put forth. To leave him on that committee is to say, "You didn't mean it." If that's what you mean, then I guess your vote will say accordingly. We're here to do your serious work with you. Help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members here before we open it up to Zoom? Nope. Anyone in Zoom? One, Ryder, Mr. Erickson.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. So, I just wanna be clear, I'm, I'm the vice chair of the BEI committee, but I'm commenting nearly as a citizen. So, a year ago, I stood before you with a letter asking you to form this committee. I had fifty to sixty signatures of citizens in the community who wanted this to happen. Afterwards, I was asked by a newspaper reporter what I would want out of it, and what I said to them was that I wanted someone, or I wanted a committee that was ready to do the work. With Mr. Longmore on this committee, you do not have a committee that's ready to do this work. You have a committee, you have seven individuals who really want to do the work, and you have one individual who has said on record in meeting that his purpose there is to derail it, that he views it as a fraud, as a fraud committee. As a citizen of St. Albans, as a person who lives here, who owns a home here, who sends my kids to school here, who volunteers and does things and like gives myself to the community when I can, I don't think people, I don't think this is a racist place, as Mr. Longmore has stated. I think this is a wonderful place where wonderful people live, and all I wanted when I formed this committee was a group of people to help advise you all on the ways it could be a little better. I firmly believe that this committee is the right way to do it. I firmly believe in the members that are on this committee, and I just wanna make it clear that we, as a, we, as a committee, have a great vision for what we can do, for the ways we can help you all do your job, and for the ways we can help this city become a little bit more inclusive and a little bit more welcoming for everyone. And that's all we wanna do, and if you just allow us to do it, we will do a good job. We are set up for this. We are ready to go, and we are raring to go, and I would just ask you to consider that, to consider what this means, not just for your pocketbook, not just for the business that, you know, having a welcoming committee can bring, but for what it means for the citizens who live here, who give of themselves, who walk to school with kids on Wednesdays, who, who, you know, help little old ladies cross the street and, you know, volunteer at the local Cub Scouts and Little League and all this stuff. Just think about what this committee can do for the people who live here and vote accordingly. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from Zoom? Not seeing any last call here. Any comments from the public? Nope. Any other comments from the council members? Do we have a motion to remove Mr. Longmore from the BEI committee? I'll make, okay, Mike?
I'll make that.
I will second that motion. So, motion made by Mr. McCarthy, seconded by me. Any other earlier discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
Aye.
Tens and ayes, so we have?
May.
May, aye, may. So, the ayes win, four to two. All right, thank you. Let me see your agenda again. Thank you for, as Leah stated, thank you, everyone, for all your volunteer work that you do. We are volunteers as well, so we've asked for a three-hundred percent raise, and we get it every year. It's still zero. All right, thank you. We have, yes. Up next is Chief.
Hello?
And I do believe you have two policies here.
This will be much easier. Yes, two quick policies. Do you care if I do first?
It does not matter, sir.
So, both of these reviewed, Police Advisory Board and Jamie's crew. The first one I'll do is duty to intervene. It's just like the many of the recent ones, it just went from one year to three years, absolutely zero change. Just a little history behind it. Their statewide mandated use of force policy includes a duty to intervene, but we have a standalone, so the policy just, I'll read the actual policy itself, but a law enforcement officer has the affirmative duty to intervene on behalf of a citizen whose constitutional rights are being violated in his or her presence. So, that's what the meaning of this policy is. I can go over any specific part you want, but that's the bone of it.
Any questions on that one policy? Next, sir.
Next policy, confinement policy procedures in holding area. This is new, meaning it wasn't a one-year policy last year. However, the PD had one before I got here. We just, it was very old. This is to regulate and give policy to our new holding area prior to moving into this police department. Thank you again for everybody here that's responsible for that. It's awesome. We just wanted to update it. So, this gives, the policy is to regulate again what, what happens inside of a processing area, because that, the whole, the holding area and confinement area includes the holding cells, interview area, and data master, which is where people are brought for processing of DUIs. Those, this includes what happens in that area, weapons being prohibited in that area, supervision in that area, and what happens if there happens to be an escape from that area. It also includes a new booking log. There was never anything in place in our department for a booking log, and all that does is it, it records every time if somebody is locked into a holding cell, which is roughly an eight-by-eight cell. It shows who's in there, why they're in there, and it shows that the officers are checking on them often, and it's every thirty minutes. So, those cells are under constant surveillance by closed service TV by both dispatch and the officers. However, this, this sheet, they have to physically go check on them as well. And I can go into any specific area you'd like, but that's the general policy of it that we're talking about. And thank you for catching the spell check today.
Any questions for the chief on that policy? Thank you, sir.
Is that the discussion of both?
Oh, I don't, oh, oh, sorry. So, do we have a motion to approve? Do we wanna approve them both at the same time?
So.
All right, so Mr. Hawkins, approve both the policies, the duty to intervene and the confinement policy and procedures, holding area. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McCarthy, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good night.
So, the mayor has two proclamations here. I will, I will read them both in their entirety. Is Ken signing these? Or has he signed?
We have versions that you can sign if you wish.
Okay, all right, so I'm not the mayor, but the mayor proclamation is recognition of Pride Month, whereas the uprising at the Stonewall Inn in New York City in June nineteen sixty-nine sparked a liberation movement that continues to carry on today among many lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ plus community members and allies in our state and country. And whereas... And whereas June has received the nickname Pride Month as a particular significant time of year for LGBTQ residents to stand up as proud members of our community even as they still risk higher rates of violence and discrimination. And whereas we, as city residents, share the responsibility to recognize the work that must continue for the cause of safety and inclusion for LGBTQ+ members of our community, now therefore I, Chad's owner, city council president, hereby recognize June as Pride Month in the city of St. Albans. And witness thereof, I have hereon to set my hand this 13th day of June in the year 2022. I'm probably going to need a better pen. The pen is cutting out. And the next one was Juneteenth. Thank God Leah has not left. So Leah, if you could tell us a little bit about the gathering that we're going to have for Juneteenth after I read this proclamation, will you be able to do that?
I will not be able to do that.
You will not?
Aliana has been.
Oh, and she is online. Aliana, will you be able to give us a little brief overview?
Ryer could too.
Oh, Ryer or Ryer?
Yes, actually, yes.
Okay, perfect. Just let me read this and then I will turn it over to you, sir. Recognition of Juneteenth National Independence Day, whereas men, women, and children who were enslaved in Texas were not informed that they had been granted freedom by the federal government until June 19, 1865, which was more than two years after the emancipation proclamation and nearly three years after the surrender of the Confederate forces in Virginia. And whereas June 19th has remained a significant date of annual remembrance of our country's ongoing reckoning with the practice of slavery, which includes violence and discrimination against Black Americans and other historically enslaved groups. And whereas we, as city residents, share the responsibility to recognize the work that must continue for the cause of equity and inclusion in our country. Now therefore I, Chad's owner, city council president, hereby join the state of Vermont and many of our fellow communities in recognizing June 19th, also known as Juneteenth National Independence Day, as an important day of remembrance and ongoing work towards racial equity and inclusion in the city of St. Albans. And witness therefore, I, therefore I hereon to set my hand on this 13th day of June in the year 2022. Mr. Erickson, can you tell us about the gathering that we're going to have?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So we will be having an event on Juneteenth, which is Sunday, June 19th, at the St. Albans Museum in the parking lot back there. So we have a number of different partners, but we've been sponsored by Lawson's Liquid and also C V O E O. So we'll be having lots of free food, hot dogs, hamburgers, salads, all sorts of stuff like that, and also a bouncy house for the kids, which is kind of a last-minute addition today. So bring your kids if you want them tired for the upcoming summer school-free week next week. And we just welcome everyone to come down. The museum will also be open and free, so come through and see the Untold Stories that was actually sponsored by you all. And it's a great little exhibit. And we just would welcome the whole community to come out, have a, you know, get some free food, have a free hot dog hamburger, and just, you know, have a little discussion about stuff. It'd be really great. And we'll be having a little, tiny little program, about 10 minutes around 4 o'clock. So please come on down. And it goes two to six, sorry.
Two to six, thank you, sir.
All right, any questions for Mr. Erickson about Juneteenth celebration? No? Thank you very much, Ryer. Okay. Parks and Recreation Committee. I don't know if it's Kelly, I saw Kelly walk in.
I'm here, but Paul's.
Oh, come on up, Paul.
Hi, everyone. First time in a long time. I'm here representing the Parks and Recreation Commission, so I have just a little prepared thing just to explain why we're here today. Based on the conversation we had in our last meeting, we as a collective group would like the city council to clarify the charge of the newly or newly formed Parks and Recreation Commission. As in, what would the city council and like the Parks and Recreation Commission to be responsible for? There was a, I guess, we'll call it an incident, but not really an incident, recently where the city council and the officials asked the commission to approve an art exhibit in the park. One commission member, myself, asked, "How are we in charge of approving this when the recreation department needs its own permits to do activities in the park?" The commission also doesn't currently approve other programs in the parks, i.e. Maple Festival, concerts, farmers' markets. So why was this temporary art exhibit different? Consistency in the requests by the city council and its officials to the Parks and Recreation Commission needs to be addressed so that the group can work to its fullest potential and be productive to ensure the community can utilize all Parks and Recreation programs and sites. If the city council would like the Parks and Recreation Commission to have more authority in these future decisions, clarification and policy would be appreciated. While the current charge does leave room for unknown requests, consistency would be appreciated in the requests being made. It might be beneficial for the city council to create a list of subjects and categories that the Parks and Recreation Commission be in charge of to eliminate the broad definition in the original charge.
Okay, thank you. Were we, I remember the conversation, but I thought it was more we were looking for kind of like a policy or like we wanted something broader. We didn't want just one approval for one thing. I thought we were looking for something.
We had a Parks Commission, which was more sort of a vehicle for engagement around the physical space within the park, right? You know, when we're doing a master plan process for Taylor Park, they have input. When we're looking at improvements to Houghton Park, they have input. That was the park side. And then we had a Rec Commission, which was more programmatic, advising the staff on should they get what, you know, what's, what are the community's needs for recreation program? Still going to think of some examples, but you know, pickleball, should they get into after-school daycare? Or should they just focus on senior bus tours, right? And both of those committees struggled to meet their core requirements and keep full until we merged them.
Yeah.
And I think we just kind of took both of those charges and combined them. So it's not crazy to reexamine them. Particularly in light of, you know, an area that we're making a lot of investment in is Hardak right now. How does that, you know, which has its own separate nonprofit board, how does that interact with the Parks and Recreation? So it's a timely request.
I, because I remember when we were looking for the art boards in Houghton Park, I went through all those. I went through, I believe I went through the Parks Committee. I mean, I, I mean, so I think I went through the Arts Council first and then I went through the Parks Committee. So that did go through there and that's for the boards, so.
I think, I think this one sparked because we sent the aforementioned art discussion to them and it seemed a little off-topic.
Okay, so we can look at that charge?
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll investigate. Anything to add, Kelly?
No, I think that was what Dominic said is what it is. It's just that now that they're combined, it would, yeah, it just needs a look at.
Okay, perfect.
So Jed, the only thing I would dispute is Mr. Bob mentioned trouble putting a forum. In my years on the Rec Commission, I don't recall ever not being able to lead because we couldn't make a forum. It was helpful to incorporate our community members to kind of give us a little bit more leeway. But we, I think the Rec Commission has always been well-attended.
Yeah.
And we never really struggled to get people there, so.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Dom. And Dom, is this you or is this going to be Tom? The authorization for 23,400 in ARPA funds for environmental assessment of 191 Lake Street? That is you.
I'm looking for a motion as Chad has suggested. It was in chat.
And where is 191 Lake Street? That's the old E B lot?
This is the Grand Butterfield's project.
Okay, so is that, is that parking lot? Is it the front parking lot and the back parking lot? Because we were wondering how many parking spots are available.
You know, I haven't looked at it from a site plan perspective. Perhaps Chip has, you know, but just from an environmental perspective. We've been using one aspect, the ARPA funds, we've had sort of a guiding principle of using those in a catalytic manner, right? And one area that we seem to be bogging down in the leaves lately is around environmental assessment work. For whatever reason, there isn't as much assessment money around as there used to be. And so we've been using some of our ARPA funds to advance housing projects by participating in some of the environmental due diligence. And so we get that at Colling Square, and that's the next agenda item. And so this is a way for us to help with this project. Right now, we're, there's a chance it could come, depending on what we find, it could eventually be a TIF project. But right now, we're just trying to help them through the due diligence part, check the environmental box.
Thank you. Any questions for Dom?
Mike? I mean, this just checks off a lot of boxes. I mean, we're talking about infill development, housing. If we're going to use ARPA money for anything, like this is, this is exactly the kind of thing we should be doing.
It's a lot of units, it's good.
You know, there's a, a one of the qualifiers when projects go for the Vermont Housing Conservation Board is if the city using its ARPA funds to advance housing projects. And so this is an important box for us to check to improve the competitiveness of other development applications.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to authorize 23,400 in ARPA funds for an environmental assessment at 191 Lake Street?
Any public comment?
Oh, any public comment?
If not, I'll make the motion.
Anyone on Zoom? Thank you, Tim. Does not appear to be any. Okay, Tim made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mike, seconded. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? None. All right. Dominic, 24 Maple Street.
Similar scenario. This one has a prospective purchase here. This is a long-term problematic property for us, so helping it get into different hands is a good strategic move. We're already into this for 70 or so, and they just need a little more money attention.
So this is adjacent to the property that we just discussed?
Colling Square.
Just down the street.
Yep, right behind it. Behind it, yep.
Do we have an amount?
They might. I know, I think, doesn't.
It's nearby, I'm not sure.
There's a street, there's a street between them.
South.
South Street, yeah.
They're, they're in, it's, just a little along the, they're the same.
Yeah, they're just right across the street from each other. They're in line with each other. Yeah.
Andy is in the first block and this is in the second block on the south.
Do we have a dollar amount?
Yep, $12,992.
$12,992. All right, do we have a motion to approve ARPA funds of up to $12,992 for environmental assessment at 24 Maple Street?
So moved, seconded.
So moved by Mr. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. Hawkins. Any other discussion? Any public comment? Sorry, I forgot that again. Any public comment? None? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays. Dom, the four-way stop at Federal and Lord Newton.
Would like to keep this going for another 30 days.
Okay, Tim, have you seen any backup?
Me, I've seen it blow through. Me, I forgot about it.
I did, I almost did too. I did observe it.
Lucky I didn't kill anybody, but I did it.
It's going down, it's not, any other direction, it's going down.
That's why at the end of the day, I almost ran over you there.
It makes me really, you know, whenever I'm driving in the city with my electric vehicle, I have the regenerative brake on like hard mode. So coasting down the hill, you don't like really pick up speed that way. It makes me thankful for that.
It's, I think it's helped with the traffic on Federal Street.
Other than that, I haven't seen any backups, other than just a potential blow light.
All right, Kim, does anyone make a motion to continue the emergency ordinance for a four-way stop at Federal and Lord Newton for another 30 days?
Public comment?
None. Public comment? Sorry.
Make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hawkins, seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Any comment here?
No.
None? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, nays.
Jed, we're not in a good meeting because we just got up to 7:50.
Okay, look at that. D A B. Oh, no. Planning Commission, sorry. Alternates, Courtney Seal and Carl Watkins.
I'd like to make a couple of comments before we move on to that.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I was involved in the interview process this time around and a couple of times back. And it's an excellent process. I agree with you, Chad, that we miss out when we just appoint someone from the floor. We don't get a chance to talk to people. What I think would strengthen the process would be that if, much like we signed warrants, if there is, if we could possibly do it, where the same group could hear all the candidates instead of splitting people up. It was very hard for me to tell Bob about my interview that I had with my person, how I thought that person was great, and Bob thought that his person was great. And you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
And if we both were there together to view all the candidates, then we would have a better idea of where the strengths and weaknesses of each candidate are. I know that we can't do that every time, but if there's a possibility that we could do it, I think that it would serve the people who are coming before us a little better with the same group of people. Not every time, but a group of people for a set of candidates and then another group of people for another set of candidates, just so that we're, the same people are interviewing all the people for the same job.
I agree with Tim. It works good, but it would be better if they were all the same, we were all.
Yeah, honestly, it would be fantastic if we had a routine. Like, you know, this time it's going to be Chad and Tim, next time it's going to be, and then we lose an alternate. Because what ends up happening is it's the same two or three people that volunteer for all of them.
Yeah. It just so happened, the last few, few times I was away, so I was not able to do it. This time I wasn't, I was here, so I was able to do them all.
Yeah.
But it was, it would just be nice if one set of people could do all the candidates. Okay.
Agreed.
I'm ready to go on 14.
Okay, Planning Commission alternates, Courtney Seal and Carl Watkins. So they were interviewed.
I think this is at Design Advisory Board, but it should be Planning Commission.
I have Planning Commission on the agenda.
I have Planning Commission, I'm on 14.
Yeah, but it's on here.
Aren't they both on it? Aren't they both on it?
Yeah, 14, 15, they're both planning and designing.
But on the memo.
Yeah.
It's got the wrong memo. Do we have a, when's the, when would these two candidates' terms expire? 24?
I don't know. They're alternates.
They're alternates, so open seats would be 2020? Well, we can go 2025.
We needed three, right? We only have two.
There are two open alternate seats.
Courtney and Carl.
Courtney and Carl.
Yep.
The suggested term is December 31st of 2025. Give them three and a half years.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve Courtney and Carl with terms ending 12/31/2025?
So moved.
Mr. Hawkins made the motion. Do we have a second? Mr. McCarthy, this is really easy minutes for whoever writes on here. It's the same two pretty much. Any public comment? None? Any councilors have any comments?
No.
None? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? D A B, Karen Marie Pullateer. Is this the only seat?
Only seat, only candidate.
Okay.
This is D A B, Design Advisory Board. And I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Hawkins. When's this term expiring? 12/31?
This would be April 30th, 2025. They're on the April 30th.
Okay, so 4/30, so term expiring 25. Okay, perfect, thank you. So motion made by Mr. Hawkins, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy.
I break the streak.
Any councilors have any comments?[1783.04] Any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? None. Uh, Dom, F Y 233.
Nope, RPC.
Oh, or.
16.
Uh, oh, sorry, I'm getting ahead of script down now.
Motion to approve, Dave Glidden and Matt Freedom, RPC representatives.
All right, thank you. There were a lot of candidates for this one, and did a lot, did a bunch drop out?
Yes.
At one point, there were six.
There were five, and they dropped out.
And this is one of the ones where there was dual councilors for.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Tim made the motion?
Yes.
And seconded, seconded by Mike.
Let Bob have this one.
Oh, Bob, Bob seconded this one.
He beat me too.
Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
I will say, RPC's can be a lot of work, and these are two really strong candidates. I know we, I, I don't know exactly all the reasons why the other folks dropped out, but we interviewed, it actually would have been a hard choice because we had a bunch of strong candidates.
Okay, now, do you vote to Tom?
All right. Water, water sewer and stormwater budgets. Let me just start by going over the cover page real quick, which shows the overall rate changers from last year. For water and sewer, it's 4.1% across the board, whether your city, whether your town, whether you're commercial, whether you're residential. And the stormwater fee is just a little over 2.5%, 30 cents a quarter. Something I want to point out about our rates, which I find interesting, is a few months back, we applied to the USDA for some funding for the water tower, and the answer was your water rates are too low, there's no grant funds available. So I guess compared to our competitors in Vermont, we're doing okay. The real story of these budgets, on the water and sewer side, is, one, there's not a lot of action in general, and two, some of the action is driven by what we see as a slow reduction in usage across the board. People are moving to low-flow devices, the commercial industrial customers make investments to try to reduce their use, and we see that a little bit every year. So we see usage going down or staying flat, and that reduction even offsets the new connections we get. So that drives things a little bit. Starting with the water, on the revenue side, nothing huge. You see that 1.9% increase in overall billing that we're proposing on line three. And then if we scroll down a little bit to line 14, there's $40,000 in water and another $40,000 in wastewater, and that's for the new radio signal devices that we call MXUs that go on meters. So about 4,000 accounts were about 2,100 done. So it's, it's an expensive effort, it's about a hundred bucks to buy the device, and then it's about 15, 20 minutes of labor to install it. So it's a slow boat, but we're getting there. And that's paid for with reserves in both water and sewer. Going down through the expenses, nothing big on the admin side, salaries are up about 5.8%, but that's just a reallocation internally, there's no, nothing above standard in terms of salaries. Note on line 44, real estate taxes are up to reflect the actuals. So we pay taxes to St. Albans Town, Fairfax, and I believe Fairfield, Marty?
Orson and Fairfield.
Orson and Fairfield for the plant. So it's a pretty hefty bill, all the pump stations, everything gets taxed. And not much, not much overall action in admin, 4.1% overall, which matches the rate increases. In the capital improvement plan, again, that $40,000 for the, $40,000 for allocation fees, all the allocation fees we take in each year, we try to budget the, sort of the average, but those all get saved. In fact, this year, we just sent a bill for about 80, and we're already, already collected a, a good bit, so we're going to have a pretty good surplus there. Again, that $40,000 for the radio signal devices, and $25,000 for valves, we've made an investment over the years, but we've realized we just need to keep doing it every year. You know, the crew just can't arrive to a break at 2:00 AM and have to spend three hours trying to find a valve that'll turn, so we're just going to keep plugging away at that preventative Going down to the debt, no major changes, couple of public course equipment items, which are a normal routine that we buy every year, replace on a schedule. Most of our debt is very long-term here. The one item I want to point out on line 111 is the Aldis Hill tank. We don't anticipate paying for that for a couple of years, we're working with the state, and so, the loan payments will begin two years post-construction, so probably three years from now. But we're looking at about a hundred grand a year in debt for 20 years. So we want to phase that line a million a little bit. That and another stuff would be about 5% on the water rates. So the state has informally told us, we have about $600,000 in grants towards that project versus about 2.6 million in construction costs. So the voters authorized 2.3. So as it stands, we're, we're okay. And then there's a Phase Two to the project. Once the new tank is built, the other tank needs to be refurbished, so that would occur once we're all set, probably in about three years. And that is, we think about a million, but that's a number three years out.
How long, oh, sorry, Tom, how long have we had that other tank?
I think it's 50 years, in that range?
Built back in the 60s, well, erected.
So, so it's time.
Yeah, it's time.
So we won't empty and repair that tank until the new one's in place and working. Down at the plants, you'll see a savings on the salary. That's in essence, we've got an employee at each plant, and Matt Mulholland is overseeing them. So we used to have, in essence, a floater, now Matt has become that floater, and so that's a savings. That's continued on here. Otherwise, nothing big going on at the plants, outside from that salary savings. And in distribution, again, no, no real action there, minor changes to salary infringe, I just see every year, but overall, the story of water is, our expenses are up 1.6%, but the rates are up 4% because of the usage. So in a 7% inflation environment, we're at 1.6, so I think we're, we're doing okay Moving on to the, to the sewer side, wastewater side. On the billing side, we're proposing a 3.5% increase, which gets to that 4.1% in rates. Nothing other major on that side. An NWCF, the Correctional Facility Plant we operate, we're raising their rates 4% the same as everyone else's, which I think is definitely fair. On the admin side, again, not a whole lot to, to talk about there, no major changes overall, just inflationary increases, less than inflation. On the CIP, again, where we're saving our allocation fees, and we're budgeting that, that 40 grand for the radio signal devices, as we have now for a few years. And in debt service, we're actually down a tiny bit. As with water, almost all that debt is going to be with us for a few decades, it's all long-term stuff. Let me go down the collection, you'll see 5.2% on the salaries, and that is because that crew, which is put across our funds, but that crew has incentives to get licenses. And so some of them are getting there, so we budget for that, and we want to see them get, we want them all to get their CDLs, we want them all to get their water distribution licenses. So those funds are there to pay them a bit more, keep a good crew here. Go down a little further in distribution, again, overall, not a lot of action, little increase in gas to be expected, down on line 144. Let me go to the wastewater plant, you do see some, some other, some other increases. Little bump in salaries, same, same issue with the wastewater operators. You need a Class V license to run our plant, our chief operator has that, we want some of the other crew, we believe are capable of running the plant, to eventually get there. And so that's some incentives for them. Going down further, to line 166, our, our repair and maintenance line item is up to reflect the actuals. Something we've learned from the new plant is, there's some savings from salaries, there's a lot fewer alarms going off, there's a lot less overtime. But a $20 million investment needs the same repair and maintenance as, as an old plant does, and that's just the reality of running a plant. We're also seeing some increases in chemicals, we've been notified by the providers of those chemicals, that the rates are going up, just what we're seeing across the economy. All those chemicals are on a state contract, so we're getting the best rate we can, as, as being part of that. At the correctional facility, nothing, again, nothing really dramatic there. Some increases there because of staffing reallocations, but nothing overall that, that drives the budget in a big way. So wastewater's up 3.4, and the difference between that and the 4% in rates, again, is the usage. Stormwater, we're proposing that 30 cents per quarter increase, so about 20 a year. The, the action in stormwater is, and I hate Chip's acronyms, but the SASH project, so the State, St. Albans State Highway slash Nathan Street project, which he could give you the briefing on, but it's proposed at $750,000, we believe half of that's going to come from a grant. So in future years, we'd have to service the debt on that. But I want to point out on the, the last page of the packet here, so we've got three years of history for stormwater and the year we're in now, and if you look at the net operations, every year we plan for some of these capital expenses and save those items because we're still getting there and doing the planning. So we've got a couple hundred grand built up already in the fund balance for a fund that only raises about $250,000 a year. So we're, we're well prepared to begin a capital project.
Tom, the half of the SASH, Nathan Street projects is going to be between 300 and $400,000 probably, that's not covered by the grant.
Yeah.
And we've got about $200,000 in the soundbags.
Yeah, and if we've got to bond 300 or 400,000 over the long term, that's a pretty minimal payment. So we're in good shape. The real story is 4.1% on the rates, not a ton of action in these budgets, but the water tank is going to be, going to be an issue in a few years.
Is there still a project for Lower Weldon Plan?
That's right, Lower Weldon and Lemon Drive are both nearing final permits, if they don't already have it. So, we have a few projects in the pipeline, SASH is likely to go first. I think it's, we could, we could have, one of the projects could be under construction next spring, which is why we programmed into this fiscal budget.
Awesome.
We took a look at this last week, Mike, Bob, and I, along with Tom, went over it. I compared it with a couple of the past budgets that we went through, and other than those two or three items, some was a mirror of the last two or three years. And don't forget, just for your education, every year in both the water and wastewater, we put $100,000 aside for CIP, okay, so, this keeps that going. So, you know, several years ago, that was a non-event, and now we have that money, and we utilize it.
So CIP is capital improvement plans.
Now, the water tank up on the hill, they're going to still keep that one up there?
Yep.
And you're adding another one?
Yep. Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a state requirement.
Oh, okay. It's cheaper for us to use that water because it's gravity-free from burning Fairfax instead of pumping it up from the lake. Uh, ju, you know, just, just, you know, people complain relentlessly on social media about their water and wastewater bill. Ours is, we have a family of three living at home, I think it's just about $300 a month, 250 to 300, and.
A month?
No, a quarter.
I was going to say, I'm a big user, mine's not that much.
Sorry, sorry, a quarter. We'll just say a hundred dollars a month.
Okay.
I've got a question for you. We're in a water bill, water coming off your roof, what's that, what's that about, like, I think it's like seven pumps or something?
Stormwater?
Yeah, comes off your, off your roof. Who came up with that idea?
Standard pump.
Well, I learned it from the stream at the lake.
Well, I'm one of those people, most.
Okay, they run in the lake, John, yeah.
So, the project that Chip's talking about.
What's the temperature of the lake right now?
Yeah, that's exactly right now.
About 60.
Yeah, so the, the project that Chip's talking about, you know, the projects that he's talking about are required so that we are treating stormwater. So every time we build a building, we put a part of the pavement, we accelerate the water that's collecting nutrients and pollutants that flow in the lake, right? So if we're going to have all that development concentrated here, we've got to do projects in order to keep that water from rushing out into the lake and ruining quality of the water for everybody.
Oh, okay.
That's what, that's why we're making that estimate.
Oh, okay.
Why don't you finish what you were saying, because you always, you were about to say what I always say at meetings.
So my, my water is, water and sewer is about a hundred dollars a month, we'll say. We're building camp in, in Franklin, and everyone complains about the cost of, the cost of the water. Our half of our septic system was $30,000, and our well is $20,000, so $50,000, that's 50 years of investment of paying water sewer here, there. And that's including filters, and salt, and electricity to run the pumps, and to get one ga, I get one gallon of it. So, you know, it's a, it's clean, good water, and it's, it's reliable.
Knowing that when you turn the faucet on, the water's coming out, and you plug the toilets, going down.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, you know, just, people complain, I'm telling you, this is a godsend, this is, you know, so.
Oh, and also, I thought that the, being able to hold so many employees, too, the way the market is, we don't have any downfall, do we?
No, it's been really stable.
A lot of that due to Marty's leadership, frankly. You know, that is a, try to map the change, you know, it's more responsive to the people that are managing them than it is to the rate.
Marty, you do got to do a training on how to do one of those old turn dials, because a guy was struggling over in Holt Park, I could go there and show him how to do the old locker dial. He's like, I don't know, we don't have these.
We can do that.
So, anyway, so do we have a, well, before, do we have any, any other comments from council? No, any public comments on the enterprise fund? None, do we have, do we have a motion to approve the fiscal year 23 enterprise budget?
Move, so move.
Uh, who made the second?
Tim. Sorry, mixed things up, I.
I guess so. Um, with no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? None.
Motion to approve warrants, 5/31/22.
Motion by Mr. Hawkins, seconded by Marie. Any comments, discussion? I promised to do them tonight, I'll get on there and do my checks that I have to do. Any, do we, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? None. Other business, Tim, or, yeah, Tim. Any other business?
No.
None. Mike?
None.
Bob?
By business, you mean just our general.
Just any comments, anything, you got it.
My only comments are very insignificant, but you know, in Taylor Park, we used to have that impervious walkways, and that's all gone, I guess it wasn't too impervious or something, but do we have any prop, any plans to replace that ever, or are we waiting for the grand Taylor Park renovation project?
All of you both, are you looking at it thinking we need to improve it, or what, what comes to mind in that, where?
You mean, I mean, the gravel comes from the entire length of Taylor Park, we used to have a.
Impervious surface.
Impervious surface, but it gradually wore away, and now we have the gravel, I'm just wondering if there's a plan to put in a more permanent kind of.
Something beyond gravel, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're not there yet.
Okay.
I mean, we, I mean, there's not a ton of daylight between gravel and impervious surface, right? The impervious surface has kind of eroded to the point that it was more gravel, and so.
Yeah.
You know, we, we saw, we're taking it out and replacing it with, with what we did is, is kind of an improvement.
Okay.
You know, but the challenge always with the park is, how much do we want to, how much do we want to raise it up, you know, so that, you know, there's a balance, having it still be like a park? It'd be a good thing for the Parks and Recreation Commission to work in their new charge, I think.
Put that in the trouble. And the only other comment I would make is, I was walked up to where the city pool is going to be, and the fact is, and it's a magnificent piece of work up here, it's almost completion, I guess. I mean, that was on Sunday. piece of work up here. It's almost completion, I guess. I mean, that was on Sunday, and it's just magnificent up there.
Yeah.
It's gonna be nice.
So I think we're gonna have a press event on the 20th, um, first day it's open. So we invite y'all, which is Monday. We invite y'all to come out and attend, and, um, Kelly might have to work out the details, but the vision is that we... Everybody who says swim for the day will have around the side of the pool and then walk, or if you can, and blow the whistle.
What do you hear? Marie?
Uh, my word's been pretty quiet, um, but I did want to ask Marty if he would take a look again at that walk, no walk, sign at the top of Lake Street on the west side of that corner. I think it's turned again.
Okay, we moved it. I'll check and see.
I saw you moved it at, you know, around Maple Festival time. I think it shifted again. I haven't looked at it recently, so I don't know, but...
All right, yeah, well, you can check it out.
Take a look at that. And also Spectrum had, had requested, um, if they could put in some bike racks. I think I messaged you on that. So I haven't heard any more from them.
I follow, I put a call back into them today, and we can hear about it, so...
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Joel, um, just a comment on the, uh, on, uh, Lower Newton. I often work every day. It looks like it's working very fine.
Yes, Lower Newton's working great. Nathan's not working so good, but Newton's working great.
Nathan's doing great.
Nathan in Maine. I don't think those lights sense.
Really?
No.
And this guy's got a member. If it's in French, it's, "I, I left."
Uh, Tom, are you saying New in Maine?
Yeah, New in. Uh, yeah, New in in Maine. I don't think those look, sorry. Nate, um, Lower Weldon, Upper Weldon in Maine, those are working great.
Okay, because Northeast signals came in about two weeks ago and recalibrated all those.
Okay.
I'll check. They should be, but I'll check.
Perfect, thank you. Um, I just have a few comments. It's been great to see lacrosse in Holton Park, so thank you, Kelly, for doing lacrosse there. It was, uh, the parents were very good at parking, so there weren't any catastrophes. Much better. They, the Steelers football parents could take a little lesson from lacrosse parking. Uh, and then the last thing, uh, I saw a tractor trailer, you're gonna love this one, Marty, turn down Stoll Street and try to turn onto Sawyer.
Oh, my gosh.
So he drove on the guy's lawn and sunk about that far, and then decided he wasn't gonna, gonna make that turn, so backed up and then went down the street. So there's still tractor trailers.
GPS.
Juggernaut. Uh, there's a telephone pole right on the corner, so as soon as he turned, I'm like, there's no way. But, uh, anyway, that's it. Uh, any other comments before we adjourn? A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Tim, seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.